Good evening and welcome to the Port Clinton City Council's regular meeting of August 26, 2014. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance of the Lord of Prayer in a moment of silence for our men and women.
(inaudible)
It takes me forever.
We can wait. I'm not saying.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us; lead us not into temptation, but to the rest of evil. Amen. The kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you. Before we, I'm being new at this, as all you guys are, and before the meeting started, I meant to tell you that ordinance 19-14 and ordinance 20-14 are going to be passed tonight on its second reading. And ordinance 19-14 authorizes the Director of Safety and Service to prepare an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and our local transportation improvement program. And ordinance 20-14, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to prepare and submit an application to the Ohio Public Works Commission for a credit enhancement payment for the 6th Street Waterline project. So if you wanted to comment on that particular ordinance, please raise your hand. For those two ordinances, raise your hand and we'll put you on the list. Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mike Snyder?
Present.
Ron Ackerman?
Present.
Lisa Sardi?
Present.
Gabe Beal? Excused. Jerry Trolle?
Present.
Nicole Fridas?
Present.
Margaret Phillips?
Present.
Thank you, council. Before you have the meeting minutes for July 22 and August 12 of 2014, could I please have a motion to accept the minutes as written? I will make that motion. Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Sardi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The chair notes the certification has been received regarding compliance with the rules and notification of this meeting. We have no guest presentations tonight and we will not vote a public comment. This is for you.
Gary Columbach, 203 West Forest Street. You can stay right there, Mr. Columbach.
I'm Jerry Columbach, and I want to comment on the trees taken down in the cemetery. Who authorizes them to cut down the trees in the cemetery? Anybody there, council? The city took them down.
We had some damaged trees out there that we took down.
I'm talking about a healthy tree. This one healthy tree was purchased by me through the city back in the 70s in remembrance of my four-year-old son who passed away with leukemia. And, well, she is now the owner, and her husband, they run the gift shop across from the postal office. Anyway, she was in charge and working for the city at that time. And she had a program going to buy a tree and they'll plant it in memory of a loved one. Well, we did that. And there was quite a few trees. The trees were donated by the state. And we paid for the tree and had it planted. It was there. And every time I went out to the cemetery, I called Craig's Tree. Lo and behold, I went out there one Saturday not too long ago, the tree was gone. And it was not dead. It wasn't in the way of anything.
Where was it at, Mr. Columbach?
It was on the southeast corner of the cemetery. You go in the cemetery, you take a left all the way down around in the bottom. And the tree was there. Right now, all you see is a pile of chips. But that tree was dedicated through the city by a, you know, I mean, I can't understand why it was taken down.
My understanding, the only trees we took down were damaged or...
No, this was not damaged. I took care of it. I trimmed the bottom of it so people could walk underneath it.
Was it the cemetery part or back by that?
It was on the cemetery side.
Cemetery side?
Right.
So on the very corner, if I turn left all the way down?
Yeah, there's a tree in the corner, and my tree was second. And there's another tree.
Okay.
And they're all dead. The two of them there was dedicated to loved ones.
Okay.
And I just wonder what the city's going to do about it.
Let me get to the bottom of it and I'll give you a call. Okay.
I need a place to put my tablet. Actually, I'm going to have to ad lib a little bit because I was a little bit mixed up on how this was going to go. I thought maybe more of these would come first. And I think I need to fill some people in. Can you hear me, Margaret?
Margaret.
First off, I got to say, some of you I haven't seen for a long, long time. My God, you've gotten older. It's only been 10 years since I... I'm tired. I'm going to speak to ordinance 14-6 that Councilman Snyder is going to introduce later. I don't have that in front of me. Basically, just to give you a little bit of background, and I'll talk about this in my notes, I'll probably be redundant about it. But some of you probably read on the news and CNN television and so on, the issues down in Ohio State with the firing of John Waters, the Governor of Ohio State marching band. It's been quite controversial. If you followed it, I believe the ordinance is modeled after the ordinance that was passed in Elmore. First members said, "I know it was passed yet, Mike, do you know?" It did pass. And basically, it's going to be a statement from City Council in support of encouraging the trustees of Ohio State University to reinstate John Waters and to make a public apology. His name's been pretty well dragged through the mud along with practically every member of the present band, as well as the 4,000-some members who are alumni of the Ohio State marching band. It's gotten pretty down and dirty. I can tell you this much, that there's nothing in the report, this Title IX report, that stands up to any type of investigation. I've been fooled by one judge here in Aruba County that came into this court, he'll throw it out. A number of attorneys have looked at it, and it's almost laughable. A lot of politics going down in Ohio State right now. Major universities, I think there are 70 universities, are cited for not being in compliance with Title IX. Title IX is the law that was passed in 1972. It basically created girls' athletics. And having been a coach in the system, I was so glad to see that happen because that's when we started really adding girls' athletics instead of just middle-year-olds. Somebody remember GAA when you were in school, the girls used to play that court basketball and so on against each other. I still am having trouble with Title IX, with the legislation. I do have trouble if those people are charged with enforcing it. A good friend of mine, who was a retired college president when this happened, came into my house and the first things out of her mouth were scapegoat, scapegoat, scapegoat. Every university is looking for some high-profile employee that they can pretty much throw it under the bus and say to the Department of Education that we're trying to comply. Ohio State has been out of compliance since 1972, very simply because they didn't have an office for somebody in charge. They finally got into compliance, as far as having an office goes, officially just before January 31 of 2014. They charged John with a number of things which happened well before he was director, things that went on in the band. I know Rod Miller's here tonight, I could probably fill you in on some of those things too, having been in the band itself. All I can do is ask you to trust me on this. And let me say this much, before I get into what I prepared to read. If this goes all the way, John's parents have signed on the dotted line for his legal fees. If I was John, I certainly would not ask my parents to do that if I did anything wrong because the estimate for John's legal fees, $300,000 or more. That's a lot of money for anybody. That kid did nothing wrong. So let me read what I came prepared to actually read. Let's see, I just got that part. Many of you, obviously, know who I am. I taught 33 years in the Port Clinton system. I taught at the business department. I was a coach, a head track coach. I had brought my three thick ones laughing. I was his coach. And he was as good as he claims to be. I recall having Tracy in some business class. Cole, I think I must have helped you out with something in debt at some point. I remember Cole coming in my room. And I see some very young former teachers here as well. And they have many, many good years together. So anyhow, as I said, I taught at the high school all those years. My wife, Jeanne, taught her at the high school, I think, from about 19 until she retired. So we've been around a long time. We had a lot of Port Clinton City income tax over those years. And, you know what, didn't mind doing it because we got a lot of good things back in Port Clinton. Let me tell you about my nephew.
I'm going to have to call you on a time limit if you don't speed it up a little bit.
Pardon me?
I'm going to have to call you on a time limit if you don't speed it up a little bit.
Okay. As much time do I have? I can do this part in about two minutes.
You have five minutes for your whole time.
Oh. Okay. John Waters spent nine summers with us during his days of high school and college. We were living in Lakeside at the time. John's first experience with Ohio State actually happened when he was about seven years old, when the Ohio State alumni band came to Lakeside and they played Script Ohio. And John, at seven years old, was marching up and down the aisles behind the building major in the band. Who would have dreamed that 30 years later, that young man would actually be up on the podium directing that very same band? By now, everyone is aware of John's trial tribulations with Ohio State Administration and trustees. We're working hard to clear John's good name. I have a couple of stories to share with you about the public John Waters as well as the private John Waters. John has always had a dream to direct a band. He got his first opportunity just a few weeks before he left to start his freshman year at Ohio State. John played the sousaphone in Earl Warren Key's community band. At the end of the evening, on the last concert, Earl handed him the baton and asked him to direct the last number. John and Earl remained close for years. When the OSU band played at Oak Harbor, John handed the baton to Earl and asked Earl to direct the National Anthem. Well, directing Earl's band was a highlight for John. It was just a couple of weeks later that he called me after he went to college and told me to come get him because he had tried out for the band and got cut. That was pretty traumatic for everybody. John did not give up. He tried out again the next year and, of course, that's the rest of his history. But what a thrill it must have been for everybody last summer to see that kid who was in your gazebo in that community band, leading the Ohio State marching band down City Beach. John began working summers in Lakeside at Muncher Golf Course. Eventually, he became the director of recreation. I noticed this summer, there were 1,500 participants in the July 4 Bicycle Parade. 1,500 kids. That's something John started. And that was the public John. But privately, let me share this with you. John had become acquainted with a young man who dealt with Down syndrome. The young man was older than John. John made him his assistant and took him out to lunch once a week. Every time the alumni band comes back to perform in Lakeside, John's friend finds me to ask me if John is going to be there. John made a point, every year, to come down from the stage to greet his friend. When this community gathered together to support Devin Cole and his family, the public John had a script Devin done by the band. He presented that framed picture to Devin at halftime when the OSU band was in town. Privately, what you probably don't know, is after Devin had left us, John informed the OSU band what had happened. The kids were adding sympathy cards to the next practice. John drove to Port Clinton on his own with a box of sympathy cards, and John went to the service. Most people do not know he was there. He asked someone else to deliver the cards while he stood in the back. He did not want this to be about him being in attendance. He immediately drove back to Columbus to teach a class. There are many stories of what John has done privately for people. Let me finish with this last one. It was when John was an assistant director. He took some of his squad leaders and went to the Ohio School for the Blind to teach their students how to march. Eventually, they appeared at school session. After that, John worked with them and they ultimately got to march in the Rose Bowl Parade in Pasadena. This past season, they took the field at Ohio State and performed Script Ohio in Braille as the marching band performed their formation. John Waters has made a positive impact in many lives during his two years as director of the Ohio State marching band. I believe that he should have that opportunity to continue. For that reason, I urge you to cast your vote in favor of Councilman Snyder's ordinance. Thank you very much.
I would like you to know that that's a resolution by Mr. Snyder, that I think Mr. Snyder will bring to the floor this evening.
Rick Noder, 608 East Paris Street.
I'm holding copies of the City of Port Clinton Park Reservation Contract and the City of Port Clinton Official Event Application Form. These are forms, copies of forms that have been approved by the city and for, you know, people to use the park or to have an event in the city. These documents have never been referred to as leases until recently. According to a quote in The Beacon, Mayor Leon referred, Mayor Leon has stated, quote, "Because the space is reserved on parkland by the city." Nowhere in these documents does the word lease appear. Either of them. Nowhere in the Park Reservation Contract, this one here, the smaller one, is there a signature by a city employee. The only signature is that of the person requesting to have it approved. Nowhere in the event application is a signature of the event sponsors or chairpersons required. Only that of the Safety Service Director where he either approves it or denies it. Nowhere in either form is there a legal description of the property, for the property being, in the mayor's words, leased. That's highly unusual for a legally binding lease document. Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 721, spells out specifically what procedures must be followed by a city when it leases the citizen's property. First, the property must be declared not needed for municipal purpose. The property loosely described in all of these documents has not been so declared. Isn't it ridiculous to think about the city declaring portions of streets used for a 5K run as no longer needed for municipal purposes? Isn't it ridiculous to think of the city declaring the first two blocks of South Madison Street no longer needed for municipal purposes when events are held there? Yet, it's required by Ohio law. Second, the lease, lease must be authorized by a city ordinance approved by two-thirds of vote of council. There have been no ordinances related to these documents. Third, the authorized lease contract must be advertised in a local newspaper at least once a week for five consecutive weeks. There have been no such advertisements related to these documents. Fourth, a bidding process must be held with the lease being awarded to the highest bidder. No such bidding process took place regarding any of these documents. So, Mr. Mayor, if these documents constitute, as you say, leases, the Leon Administration has broken the law. The Leon Administration has leased the citizen's property willy-nilly, haphazardly, and without regard for Ohio law. It seems to me that you have a choice. Either citizens' use of city parks and streets events is a lease or it isn't. One or the other. That simple. If it's a lease, your administration, for which you are responsible, has broken the law. If it's not a lease, then the proposed initiative petition will not change the citizens' use of their parks one bit. What is it, Mayor?
What question are you asking?
Is it a lease or isn't it?
I don't know. If you continue to read that article, it stated that. I'm not an attorney, I'm not a judge. I propose questions, just like anybody else would. If I felt that Zilladale was a good statement or initiative or cause of issue, I thought it was clear, I wouldn't be asking those questions. But as you say, my responsibility to the city is to enforce those ordinances, right? abide by them. If I don't quite understand them, I need to have somebody give me a legal description of what those mean. Possibly means it also doesn't mean you're judging Patrick Torso's, right? I can't enforce something I don't understand. So there's parts in there that I question, and I did that in those quotes. That's what I did. I propose questions.
Well, let me read this quote. "The Walleye Festival Arts in the Park July 4th Activities. There are no exchange of funds, but it constitutes a lease because the space is reserved on parkland by the city." You said it constitutes a lease. Unequivocally, you said that and you gave a reason why it constitutes a lease. And now you're saying, "Well, I'm not sure."
The comment that I made was talking about the Walleye Festival in particular. I questioned whether or not it could constitute a lease, since we do reserve that piece of property for exclusive use by them. They also charge a fee for the spaces for different vendors. It's a good question, I think. Some might like an answer to it.
Your response, I believe, Mayor, you said it could constitute a lease. Your quote in the paper says it is a lease. I think there's a big difference between those two statements. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Debbie Croft, 120 Adams Street.
Good evening, everyone. I'm asking the City Law Director, the Mayor, and City Council to clarify something for me because I'm really confused about it. I have an approved City of Port Clinton event form, which is still active through the end of September. This is the same form that is also used by the Walleye Festival and also the upcoming Harvest Festival. The Mayor has publicly stated at a meeting as well as in the newspaper that this form is a lease. There is no place on the form that states I have entered into a lease with the City of Port Clinton. There also is no place for my signature. Can you please tell me, according to Ohio Revised Code 721 concerning leases, where my event has been published in the papers, the date that this event was approved by City Council's two-thirds affirmative vote? Or has the City Council and the Mayor violated the law? If I use the city's property for my event, will I now be trespassing on city property because the city did not follow the law? I would like the City Law Director to please give me an opinion on this. And he's not here tonight, so. Thank you.
James Doris, 111 Alma Street.
Oh, yeah. First of all, I was a yea or nay on what you did with the property out at the end of the period. I want to know, who do I contact? How do I find out what the actual proposal for that property is? There are people name-calling, using vulgar language, accusing people of things that aren't true. All I want to know is what the proposal says. In the past few weeks, and I've sat very quiet through this whole thing, and that's hard for me. When someone starts cutting down business owners because they have signs in their window that says, "Save Port Clinton, develop Waterworks Park," I have a problem. This is America. Everybody has a right to say what they want, and they do not need to be treated that way. I just saw, or just heard a gentleman speak on, "Is it a lease or isn't it a lease?" Has anybody ever heard of weasel wording? Have you ever heard of that? Weasel wording. Let me give you the description. Vague phrasing that often accompanies biased or unverifiable information. Such statements could be, should be clarified and removed. I'm hearing a lot of weasels. And all I want is to see a proposal, hear what you're going to do. One minute I hear there's 119 condos. The next time I hear it's 400 and some condos. I don't care how many condos there are, as long as they pay their taxes and we have revenue in the city. Most of the people that are complaining don't even live in the city. I have lived on Lake Erie for 67 years. When I wanted to see a sunset and I wanted to see the water, I was very fortunate. I could just walk out my front door on Sand Road and go see it. I'm in town now. I don't mind walking uptown, riding a bike uptown, getting in the car and going uptown to see a sunset or be around it. I don't understand why all this name-calling, all this stuff is going on until there is a proposal put before you and put before the public that they can vote on. I haven't seen one. Another question is, is this group called Court? How many people are in it and who are they? Never get an answer. I ask. The lady, personally, I was taken off Facebook for something that, I have the whole conversation right here. Never said anything wrong. Could have, but didn't. And I'm wondering, is this the way the City of Port Clinton is going to start acting? If you don't say and do or believe what one person believes, you're going to be bullied. Your business is going to be bullied. Are you going to be mistreated? I think it's sick. And I don't care if you are for or against, or if you are on City Council, I think you have to sit and wait to find out what this proposal is, see it yourself, figure out what it is, and quit cutting people down. I don't think the good, you can sit over there and laugh all you want, but I think that everybody in this room, including myself, should be ashamed of the way we have acted as citizens of the City of Port Clinton. I apologize to one lady for what was said about her as a member of Port Clinton. These remarks are uncalled for on either side. These remarks are uncalled for on either side. And all I want to know is, when are we going to see a proposal? That's all I want, and I want everybody to sit back and think of what fools we are making of ourselves and what other cities are thinking. Thanks, guys.
Mr. Nutter, Mrs. Doris asked some direct questions about CORD, as to what it is and how many members. And I will let you respond to those two questions, what it is and how many members, if you wish to do so.
I...
If you don't, that's fine. I'm just offering you that opportunity. She asked those two direct questions and...
I've used my time already, Madam President.
Well, as Madam President, I may offer you some more time, and I'm telling you that you can answer those two questions.
I can sign in maybe next meeting and answer those questions.
Up to you, but I'm offering it to you right now if you so desire. Jerry Yonkey, 117 Cedar Street.
Jerry Yonkey, 117. Please. Mr. Mayor, I have a question about the lighthouse, the Lighthouse Conservancy. With all the work that they put into this lighthouse, it's ready to be shipped to the site. What is the estimated time of construction of the foundation?
Can I comment on the construction of the foundation? I can tell you that we have received information from, in our concern, submerged land leases. There's a few things in there that I questioned, the law director questioned. Waiting for a response from them back. There is language in there that talks about raising money, making money on that leased property, which we know the group wants to have fundraisers to help support the maintenance and, you know, keep, we want to make sure there's not going to be a violation, so we're waiting for those questions to be answered. Before we can even enter into a contract, we ask council to enter into a contract and talk about the placing of the ordinance.
Okay, the reason I'm asking this question is because calls to your office from the Conservancy has gone unanswered. And just to get it out into the public right now, I just thought I'd ask that question about the lighthouse.
I do want to answer the question about the calls that have been unanswered. The mayor and I spent probably 15 to 20 minutes with Mr. Norgard after the last meeting, answering all the questions that he had. So if they're telling you that we haven't been communicating, we have. We sat right here and talked to him about the issues on the submerged land lease. And there are questions on the submerged land lease that not only affect us, but truly affect the Lighthouse Conservancy. So we want to do what's best for them as we want to do what's best for us. The lease is shorter than what we usually expect from a submerged land lease. We'd like to see that lease be longer for their benefit as in ours. Again, they've also put a piece of language in there that says they cannot raise the money on that land, and we know that they want to be able to sell T-shirts and that sort of thing, so.
Okay, this is just a simple lighthouse to be put in, a simple location.
We agree, Mr. Yonkey, but that doesn't change the fact that there are things that we have to do because we're a city.
But, but...
I understand.
We're looking at a development on the horizon. Is this going to be the same problem?
It could be.
With the development in Waterworks Park?
It could be.
Is what we're having with the lighthouse?
It could be.
So we've been fooling with the Lighthouse Conservancy for a good number of years now, ever since they got it from Brand. So how long are we looking for with the development?
I don't know. The submerged land lease has been a stickler. It's something that we told the Conservancy from day one that they needed to do. It was from day one that they told us they didn't think they needed to do it, and then they found out that they did, and that was part of the holdup.
Coastal management is controlling the submerged land lease, then?
Yes. It comes from them, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And they're not controlling it. That's the language.
Well, yeah, that's, okay. Thank you. We'll try to keep on top of the situation.
We are all trying to do that.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Rod Miller, 320 Alice Street.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening. I'm here to speak in perspective in relation to John Waters. I've known John for a number of years, since his days as an undergraduate, through his days of graduate, as the assistant graduate assistant for the Ohio State Marching Band, and then the assistant director, and then has becoming the full director. But I'm also here to stand in front of you today to tell you, a part of the letter that I spent, that I sent to Betty Montgomery, who's investigating this whole thing, because I am standing here to prove to you that things in the Glarus Report that were written about the band are absolutely untrue. Because of the different things that John had talked about, that he made no attempt to change the culture of the band. And I stand here because one of the things that many hats that I wear, including John Philip Sousa, which, if I grew out the thing and put on my Sergeant Pepper outfit and turned around and you saw the backside, you might recognize me in front of that point. But I can stand here in front of you and tell you that I have done workshops with the Ohio State University Marching Band. I have gone in there to work with different instances that have come up with the band. A culture? Absolutely not. You don't find a culture that was described in the Glarus Report and then equate that with an outstanding source of pride for a university, for a state, and let's face it, for a country, after their videos had gone viral and gone worldwide. You don't find a culture that breeds the type of thing that when I sit there after a game and watch the band take an extra 30 to 40 minutes to put a script Devon on the field, to make a video. If you saw the pictures prior to Devon's passing, you would have seen that picture that John Waters presented to him above his bed. We often talk about the quality of one's life is what they do when they're not being watched, and you heard Jim talk about some of those things. Those are some of the other things that we've seen John Waters do. But I'm standing here to tell you that this gentleman needs our support. Why? Because good people deserve our support. The things that John did were very unique. We sit and talk about a lot of stuff. And I've had a lot of questions asked of me because I am a five-year member of the marching band and a three-time I-Dotter. But I lived that life. In a culture? Absolutely not. Isolated incidents? You betcha. Not going to deny that. Individuals or small groups? Absolutely. But John Waters was working very, very diligently to eradicate those things. He had the nickname, we talked about nicknames. Oh, by the way, mine was very offensive. It was Groucho, because I had a horrible little mustache when I made the band. So I was given Groucho, and I was called, I was given the name Groucho, and that was the last time I was ever called that name. I kind of liked it. I thought it was kind of cool, so I shaved off my mustache. But we don't have these, we don't have this culture. A culture is what you find in a country or in a region. Within a group, isolated incidents? Absolutely. And we have folks here that we know that some of our citizens do different things. Chief, you put out a great blotter every day on Facebook, and I like to look in there and hope I don't read any of my former students' names. But does that spell out a culture for the folks at Port Clinton? I would hope that you would think it doesn't. And I would hope that you would find that the truth needs to come out. And I'm standing here in front of you tonight to ask you to please support this resolution. Please support the truth and the pursuit of truth. And I really hope that Betty Montgomery's report comes out and finds just that, that it's not a culture, and that John Waters truly was working diligently to do these things. I spent a lot of hours on the phone with John. He would call and give me an incident that would happen, and we would talk about it for a great amount of time. The Glarus Report is absolutely wrong, and he deserves our support. And more than that, I think the citizens of this state, the Ohio State University, all of us that have enjoyed that band so much as they come here to Port Clinton, deserves the support of looking for the truth. And I think this is a crucial investment in looking for that truth. I urge all of you to please support Councilman Snyder's Resolution 14-6. Thank you for your time.
No, that's it. Okay. All right. We will now go to the mayor's report.
At the beginning of the meeting, there are a lot of two ordinances that were asked in the past. Plus, we will contribute readings because of the report, because of time issue, these issues need to be passed before September 4th, which I would say is late before the next council. If it could, the one ordinance talks about us actually proceeding forward, the administration states the director to go after Fawny to potentially work on the rest of old issues. Successful in part of that project, the funds limited to how long we can go. That would give us the opportunity to move forward in terms of securing more of those funds and plan for that. The other part of that, the other ordinance, 20-14, is the Six Street Waterline Project, which basically what that does, it allows us to go after the interest money to EFP towards that project. So really what we're doing is we're going back after some of that money that we already prepared. That's during the year of construction and also one year after. And that's really what it does. Okay? I really don't have anything further now at present time, so thank you.
Madam Chair's report.
I'm listening tonight, Madam President.
Thank you. Treasurers' report.
Madam President, my report for July has been passed out, and as I have been doing in the past, I'll tell you that Fed tax is now up to $92,360. That's my report. Thank you.
Safety Service Director's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of things. We're going to see our guys out. We're working on a bunch of the catchphrases that have been damaged throughout the last couple of years. Actually, we probably have 20 of them that we're working on, so please be careful in those construction sites for the guys out there working. Also, they're working on Adams Street and Washington Street. As you know, there's a lot of truck traffic that's gone through there, and the curbs are up here, and the bricks are all tore up, so we are working to take those out and put asphalt back in those areas. And just please have a safe, uh, Labor Day weekend, enjoy the four P's and the car show downtown. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Police Chief's report.
Thank you, Madam President. I have two items. The first one, I'm basically going to brag about the employees that work for the city. On August 19th, your police department was practicing at Waterworks Park for the upcoming game against the United States Coast Guard. I will also add that we got stomped on that game. However, Fire Chief Johnson stopped up there, and he needed a boat operator because his son, Lucas, who also is a city mechanic and a fireman, had spotted a gentleman having problems about 700 yards out in the lake, and he was clinging to a blue tube. Well, at that time, I had about seven players out there practicing, and I yelled over that I needed an operator. Well, all seven of them ran over, and we decided to put both boats in operation. We were successful in retrieving the gentleman and got him to Magruder ER. So a huge shout-out to Luke Johnson, Corbin Carpenter, Bruce Sloggy, Dave Scott, Ellis Fuyava, Nate Edmonds, Ron Timmons, and Mark Anderson for assisting with the rescue. And the second one, some of you might have been awakened on Saturday morning, about 3:30 in the morning, because I was, because it went right in front of my house. Sinuski was in search of a vehicle regarding a domestic violence call. State Patrol got on Route 2, saw the vehicle, initiated a traffic stop, a traffic stop turned into pursuit. The pursuit wound up coming into the city on State Road, and in 2012, we equipped all our cruisers with stop sticks for this very reason, to avoid any potential hazards on the roadway or possibly running into a house. Sergeant Scott was able to successfully deploy the stop sticks, and within a mile, the vehicle's tires were flattened. He got out. A short foot pursuit ensued where the subject gave up on the ground. So both those incidents, I just would like to brag and thank everybody and show you that we are working. Thank you, Madam President.
We will now go to correspondence. I have from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, an application for a D5L license, which is new, from the Island Number 6 LLC, and it's doing business as the rivalry. It's the new, are they a pool?
Sports bar.
Sports bar. On Madison Street, right by the Eagles and across from the BMW. That's it. It's a new license. We have a right to object.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that we waive our right to object to get the new D5L license.
I have a motion to waive our right to object on the D5L license for the Island Number 6 LLC. Thank you.
I also have a second from Mr. Troli.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I also have a save the date of the Third Annual Summit on Aging, which will be Friday, October 31st, from 11:00 to 3:00. It will take place at the Magruder Hospital Conference Center. I have a letter from Dr. Todd Tibbs, Palm Springs, California. Dear Madam President, I am writing today to encourage your consideration of a resolution to support John Waters, the recently terminated director of the Ohio State University Marching Band. My friend and fellow alumnus of the Ohio State University, Michael Snyder, will be presenting the resolution to the Port Clinton City Council on August 26th. My name is Todd Tibbs. I'm a proud graduate of Port Clinton High School and the Ohio State University. I was also a member of the Ohio State University Marching Band from 1981 to 1985. I have had the honor and pleasure of being under the direction of some of the most innovative, influential, and inspirational music directors in the country. The list includes Dr. Jack O. Evans, Dr. Paul Droste, Dr. John Woods, Dr. Louis Sullivan, and Mr. Earl E. Markie. I speak from experience when I say that John Waters is a great director and a good man. John Waters was the director of the Ohio State University Marching Band for mere two years. During his brief tenure, he brought worldwide acclaim to our band, our university, and our state. John Waters' position as director of the Ohio State University Marching Band was terminated on July 24th. His termination was executed by newly hired university president, Dr. Michael Drake. President Drake, at the time, had been on the job for only two weeks. During those two weeks, he never met nor interviewed John Waters. The termination of John Waters was based solely on the severely flawed Glarus Report, which has been mostly repeated by independent investigators. It is my desire, as well as the desire of the, you know, that whole point of initial alumni association, to have John Waters reinstated as the director of the Ohio State University Marching Band. I respectfully request you add your support to John Waters. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Dr. Todd, our Tibbs. The next piece of correspondence I am reading to you with great regret. Dear Madam President, please consider this letter as my official notice. I will be resigning my seat on Port Clinton City Council as councilman for Ward Line effective Tuesday, August 26th at 11:59 PM. With much respect, Ron Akkerman. And I'm sure that Mr. Akkerman is going to talk about that a little bit later, but I just want to take the opportunity, and I hope I can do this. To me, Ron has been a wonderful councilman. He comes to the table with thought and perspective. I have never seen him vote on an issue that he has not researched, and he has voted with great sincerity. I am very disappointed in losing him as a councilman. He has been a very integral part of our team, and I'm going to this incredibly. Also, under correspondence, I have the Treasurers' report, the Finance Committee, minutes of 8:19, the Parks, Rec., and Cemetery, minutes of 8:12, the Infrastructure Committee meeting of 8:15, and the Laws, Rules, and Ordinances Committee of 7:22. Could I please have a motion to accept the correspondence as stated?
So does Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Could I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Troli. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We will now go to the reading of ordinances and resolutions. Will the clerk please read by title and summary only, Ornance 16 and 14?
Ornance 16-14, an ordinance to approve the 2014 replacement pages to the Port Clinton Catified Ornances and declaring emergency.
This council will should take any action this evening on Ornance 16-14. Mr. Snyder?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion that we retain the emergency clause.
I have a motion to retain the emergency clause in Ornance 16-14, the second. Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Any discussion on the retention of the clause? Seeing that, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Dakota Friedas?
Yes.
Thank you. This council wishes to take any further action on ordinance 16 dash 14. Mr. Trowley.
I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance...
Adopt.
Or adopt, I'm sorry. Ordinance 16 14.
I have a motion to adopt ordinance 16 dash 14. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Sardi. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll? Dakota Friedas?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 16 dash 14 has been approved. Will the clerk please, we'll go to second reading of the ordinance and resolutions. Will the clerk please read ordinance 19 dash 14 by title and summary only?
Ordinance 19 dash 14, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Program and to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency.
This council wishes to take any action this evening on ordinance 19 dash 14. Mrs. Friedas.
I make a motion that we waive the three required readings on ordinance 19 dash 14.
I have a motion to waive the three required readings on ordinance 19 dash 14. Do I have a second?
Second, Madam President.
He has his hands raised. Your voice came out. That's moving. I'll second that, Mr. Snyder. Any discussion on the waiving of the readings? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Dakota Friedas?
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Thank you. This council wishes to take any further action on ordinance 19 dash 14. On ordinance 19 dash 14? I have a motion to retain the emergency clause on ordinance 19 dash 14. Do I have a second?
I'd like to make a second of that motion, please, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. Any discussion on the retaining of the clause? Seeing none, will the court please call the roll? Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Dakota Friedas?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. This council wishes to take any further action on ordinance 19 dash 14. Mrs. Friedas.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 19 dash 14.
I have a motion to adopt ordinance 19 dash 14. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Sardi. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll? Dakota Friedas?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 19 dash... I wish to... Uh, ordinance 19 dash 14 has been passed. This coun... We will now go to ordinance 20 dash 14. Will the court please read that by title and summary only?
Ordinance 20 dash 14, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to prepare and submit an application to the Ohio Public Works Commission for a credit enhancement payment for the Sixth Street Waterline Project and to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency.
This council wishes to take any action this evening on ordinance 20 dash 14. Mrs. Friedas.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the three required readings on 20 dash 14.
I have a motion to waive the three required readings on ordinance 20 dash 14. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Sardi. Any discussion? Will the court please call the roll? Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Dakota Friedas?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Thank you. This council wishes to take any further action on ordinance 20 dash 14. Mrs. Friedas.
I'd like to make a motion that we retain the emergency clause on ordinance 20 dash 14.
I have a motion to retain the emergency clause on 20 dash 14. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Sardi. Any discussion? Will the court please call the roll? Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Dakota Friedas?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. This council wishes to take any further action on ordinance 20 dash 14. Mrs. Friedas.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 20 dash 14.
I have a motion to adopt ordinance 20 dash 14. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Sardi. Any discussion? Will the court please call the roll? Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Dakota Friedas?
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 20 dash 14 has been adopted. Thank you very much, council. Okay, we have no first readings of ordinance and resolutions this evening. We'll go to business from the floor of the councilman, Mr. Snyder.
Thank you, Madam President. We'll get things started. I would like to make a motion from the floor to add Resolution 14 dash 6 to tonight's agenda.
I have a motion to add Resolution 14 dash 6 to tonight's agenda. Do I have a second?
Madam President, I'd like to second that motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. Any discussion? Will the court please call the roll? Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Dakota Friedas?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 14 dash 6 has been added to tonight's agenda. This is proof of the county.
Yes.
Would you please read by title and summary only, Resolution 14 dash 6?
Resolution 14 dash 06, a resolution by the council of the City of Portland in support of Mr. Jonathan Waters and his ongoing battle against the Ohio State University.
This council wishes to take any action this evening on Resolution 14 dash 06. Mr. Snyder.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion that we waive the three required readings on the resolution.
I have a motion to waive the three required readings on Resolution 14 dash 06. Do I have a second?
I'd like to second that motion, please, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. Any discussion? Yes?
Thank you very much. I could go on and on about why I believe this is the right thing to do, and you've heard some folks tonight, but in response to waiving the three required readings this Friday at 9, 10 o'clock in the morning, the Ohio State University Board of Trustees is going to be meeting in Columbus, Ohio, and if adopted this evening, my intent is to present this to the Board of Trustees before that gets out of. That's why I'm asking for the three readings to be read.
Any further discussion? Will the court please call the roll? Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Dakota Friedas?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Thank you. This council wishes to take any further action on Resolution 14 dash 06. Mr. Snyder.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 14 dash 06.
I have a motion to adopt Resolution 14 dash 06. Do I have a second?
I'd like to second that motion, please, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. Any discussion? Mr. Ackerman.
Yes. Madam President, when this resolution was brought to my attention a few weeks ago by Councilman Snyder, I obviously did what most other people would have done, gone online and read some articles, both for and against, positive and negative. One thing I do want to comment on is I came to this meeting tonight not knowing exactly how I was going to vote in support or not in support of this resolution. By moving the public commentary section in front of ordinances and resolutions, it gave me an idea of how I am definitely going to vote, and I think it's important that the change we made made a change in what I felt I was going to do tonight. The information provided by the three individuals, who I have a tremendous amount of respect for, has clearly made my decision a lot easier. Council, I'd like to thank you for making that change in the order of our agenda, and it's come through question tonight, so thank you very much.
Madam President, I would say the same thing. I even emailed Mr. Snyder and said, "I don't know which way I'm going to go on this because I'm not hearing what I want to hear or what I need to hear." Having Mr. Redlaw and Mr. Miller come here tonight, I think made a big difference. It helped fill in some of the blanks that I had, and I am glad that they spoke at the beginning of the meeting and not after we had done all this.
Any further discussion? No questions from the audience this evening. Any further discussion?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt.
The motion's already being... We're in discussion.
I'm sorry, I thought you had a good... If I have to make a comment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you. You know, I could go on and on, and you've all seen the emails and news articles, and I think of the six of us that are here this evening, I think the one that's following this the closest, yes. I'm the graduate of the Ohio State University. I did not participate in the marching band. I could not carry a tune in a bucket. I've known John for about 10, 12 years personally. There are so many outstanding glaring flaws in this report that there is just a time as a legislature where we have a duty to help right a wrong, and whether it's an immediate impact, like the wrong of fixing possums or the resolutions or the ordinances that we passed earlier, or a small part of a much bigger puzzle, and I believe this is a small part of a much bigger puzzle, John has extended a hand of friendship to the city of Port Clinton in so many, many different ways, whether it's in part with the marching band or in whole. He's brought the band to the city of Port Clinton to entertain the citizens, to educate our students. And talking with Mr. Miller earlier today, I learned that other than the communities in the immediate central Ohio area, the marching band has been to Port Clinton, Ohio, more than any other community on the planet in the time that John has had the ability to take the band wherever they like to go. So I think that is just another piece in this whole big puzzle, and again, it's time that we extend a hand of thank you back to John in whatever this may accomplish. Hopefully, it's his court's duty to write just an incredible law, because I think...
Any other comments? Will the court please call the roll? Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Jerry Trowley?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Dakota Friedas?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 14 06 has passed. Now we'll continue.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be real brief. Mr. Colson, if you would be kind enough to thank the Service Department. They have been all over town sealing cracks. I think it's wonderful. It's going to add to the longevity of the hard work that's been going for the past couple of years and keep that process going. I would like to wish all the students best of luck in this school year. Good luck to the Redskins. I think we're all pretty excited for not only the football program, but all the other sporting activities. Encourage everyone to go out Friday night and support the Redskins. They're home 7 o'clock versus John Waters alma mater, Woodmore. And with that, Ron, I can't stop what we're going to say. I'm sorry to lose you. We've been, I've always agreed, but I appreciate your comments. Love your haircut. And you should sit next to me, man. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Ackerman.
Yes, Madam President. I was thinking about writing a whole blog, speech, reading it, but I decided not to bore everybody. I'd like to thank everyone who sits at this table and everyone who's ever sat at this table with me. No one knows how difficult this job is until you take this seat, and you have to do it. I have great admiration for our administration. They do a wonderful job, in my opinion, our, both our chiefs, fire chief, police chief. I've got so much respect for them now more than ever before, now that I know what they go through, I don't even know what they go through day in, day out, hearing the reports and knowing what they have to do and how great their departments are. It's just been a wonderful time to be able to work for the city. I'd like to thank the voters in Ward 1 for having the trust and faith in me to elect me to office last November. I'd also like to apologize to them. There comes a time in life where you realize what's important. What's important to me right now is my family, which is my wife and kids, and my job. And I have another opportunity to increase time in all three of those, and that opportunity will take away from my dedication to the city. It would not be fair of me to maintain this council seat and do a half-person job. Whether you agree with what my opinions are or not, hopefully you understand that I really work hard and value the importance of the job. I am not one who's going to do my job halfway. Three years ago, when I decided to accept the appointment to council, I said the same thing to a group of girls over at Dander. I wouldn't do that to them either, and I couldn't do that to the city of Port Clinton. When I go in, I go full in, and I apologized to everybody I'm leaving behind, but sometimes you've got to do what's best for you as an individual, and this is unfortunate one of those times. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, Madam President. Thank you for all the guidance and support you've shown me over the last year.
Mrs. Sardi, tell me... Hey, I'm... Once again, Ron is... I think of something when I says it before I can say it, so...
Oh, like your fucking steakhouse.
Well, Mrs. Phillips and I went to a seminar for our camp in Columbus, Small Town's Big Future. It was very informative. WSOS was responsible, and we heard Dr. Hill speak. Very, as you said, he was very, very good. It was on suburbs, capital improvements, economic development, a little bit of everything, being new on council, trying to be informed about what's happening and how it can help the city. It was nice to go, meet other people, network a little bit, stuff like that, so it was a good, some cracky little wrap. And then I enjoyed sitting by Ron for my few months that I've been here. People do a great in this new job, I know they do, and I will still see them as well. Mr. Trowley.
Ron, good luck.
Thank you.
Make a right move for yourself and for your family.
I know, it's hard because I appreciate you.
We'll talk that later.